And Janie, would you call the board please?
Ms. Feeney. President. Mr. Rumpf. Mr. Zad. Ms. Vogler.
Here.
Or Mr. Raymond.
Here.
Ms. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Crowe.
Yo. Okay, I've got proof of notice that the meeting agenda was published in the requisite places. If anyone would like to see that, it's right here. And at this point, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll send them over. Second.
Okay, a motion is second to approve the agenda. Just one note, I believe the agenda was changed since it was published in the newspaper to update the one item. Is that true, Ms. Wood? Okay. So what does it read now? I just got the old. Okay. So the agenda should read A1, Educated Compensation Model, and this is the new part, and November Referendum Planning. So they used to just say Education Educated Compensation Model. So just to specify that that new wording is what we are approving as our agenda. Same note for their discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. We have an agenda, so we will move directly to the agenda. At this point, I will pass the baton over to Dr. Busler to take us through the meeting.
Well, our plan tonight was actually three parts. And the first part is to have a teacher compensation committee, which is here with Gina and Leslie and Andy to make a presentation. We also have Joe Donovan here from the Donovan Group, and Joe is, I believe, also going to make a couple of comments in that first section. We'd like to limit that to presentation and information that we're sharing with the Board. And then Part Two is giving the Board an opportunity to ask any questions that the committee or the committee members. And we're hoping to do that in a 40 to 45-minute timeframe, Part One and Part Two. And then Part Three is really what the Board had talked about at several Board meetings in November and December, and that was having time for Board members to discuss, ask each other questions, check out where other Board members' thoughts on our ideas are on the teacher compensation plan. And that's really a conversation that President Kraus will facilitate with all of our Board. And Gina has a couple of questions, too, that I think she'd like an answer, and her feedback for the committee, so you could answer those questions following, even Part Three, after you've had an opportunity to talk amongst yourself. And that's our plan for tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Gina and the committee, and they have a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe is part of -- can we see it electronically, or are you going to show it to us and provide it to us electronically afterwards?
I will provide it electronically afterwards. I'll share the link with you. So, good evening. I really appreciate this opportunity to talk with you. I will have my committee members introduce themselves, because as I tell everyone, my daughter is two now, and she's a very visual reminder of how long these committee members have stuck with us, because when we embarked on this project, I wasn't pregnant at the time. So, but we're really excited, because we think after significant planning and reflection that we have a great plan to present to you tonight. So you all want to introduce yourselves and tell what you do for the district for people who may not know you.
John Fishwild. I teach physics at the high school. I've been here for 25ish years.
I'm Colleen Schell. I'm a counselor at Rome Corners, and this is my 30th year in the district.
I'm Dave Ebert. I teach mathematics at the high school, and this is my 20th year in the district.
And we also have Colleen Christensen, who couldn't be with us tonight, but she helps mentor new teachers, so she brings a new teacher perspective. So tonight, what we'd like to do is we have a short presentation for you. We know all of you have read the plan materials and the schedule ahead of time, but we just thought it would be a nice summary for you. So if you could save your questions until the end, because some of your questions may be answered as we go through. But what we're really looking for tonight, at the end of your discussion, is to pull each of you and ask you really our critical question, is what key components do you need to support this plan? And I'll let Colleen kind of fill that in when we talk about next steps, but obviously your feedback is critical as we do revisions. So with that, I will turn it over to Colleen to get us started.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so you've seen these before. These are the eight pillars that we have held true to as we've been working on this for the last two and a half years, even through all the revisions. So, boy, I should have brought glasses. Does the model support -- I'm going to go this way. Increases in student achievement? Does the model attract and retain high-quality staff? Is the model based on objective standards? Is the model affordable? Are the compensation levels attainable by staff? Is the model predictable? Is it equitable? And does it have parent and community support? Okay, thank you. All right, Gina. Oh, just like that, right? There we go. Okay. So, last time we saw you, we had -- it's a -- the model was different than it is now. We've made a lot of changes after meeting with teachers, focus groups, the community survey that went out, talking to the Board, and we listened. So some of the concerns that came from the teachers was that it wasn't real predictable as far as if a teacher wasn't able to work the certain extra hours each year, then they wouldn't make the salary that they had hoped to make. It was all really pretty cumbersome in tracking of all the hours and what counted for getting hours for advancement, and it really wasn't aligned with the idea of teachers as professionals. It was a lot of still, like, timesheets and tabulating. The community concerns were collected through a survey, and they mostly came down to the high cost and wanting to hold teachers accountable. If we're going to pay them more, we want to make sure we have good teachers. And what should be up there, too, is the concerns of the Board, which were a lot about the cost. I think that's why I turned it over.
Thank you. What we wanted to make sure was really clear to everybody as we spoke about this compensation plan, but is that it is just a component of a larger vision for the district. And we know that there has been a School Board Visioning Committee that's been meeting regularly to make progress on putting together, or maybe I should say coalescing, all the different aspects of visioning input that we've been receiving over the past several months, including our summer conference. And as part of the draft of what they have offered or what they have put together for part of the visioning committee are some specific values in the school district, and you can see those up there in bullet point format. As I said, this is just a draft and could go through other revisions as we continue to work together to refine the core components of the paper. However, relevant and engaging learning experiences in and out of the classroom. That came to us from all of our work in personalized learning. That was confirmed as being very important through the visioning conference, and all the input from the students, as they spoke about the importance of the experiences they were having outside of the classroom also. The whole child emphasis as one of our core values. We are not just about academic achievement, but we're also about social-emotional learning and all the pieces that go with it. Educational equity, which is something that we consider to be very important to us in the district, and we want to start to put a lot of focus on making sure that we are providing an equitable experience for all of our students. Strong family and community partnerships. And finally, a key component of our vision for the school district and the huge connection to the compensation model is highly effective educators. We know that none of the things above are possible without highly effective educators. And you'll see in a little bit that a piece of feedback that one of the teachers gave us at the high school last week that I thought was really important is when we spoke about the why of the compensation model, and we spoke about the attract and retain highly effective educators. And this person said, "It's also important for you to think about attracting, developing, and retaining highly effective educators." And that part has really stuck with us, because in essence, that is exactly what the entire compensation system is set up to do. And we'll show you that a little bit throughout the presentation, but we wanted to make sure you saw how we see this fitting into the larger vision for the district.
So the intent of this slide is something that you were well aware of, but staff was not, that there were concerns about the timing of the referendum and why wasn't it done at the time that our capital referendum was done. If we don't do it in April, does that mean that the plan has been delayed for yet another year? And we assured them that the entire plan is that if, in fact, we can get this referendum passed this November in the presidential election, that it would be a retroactive application of the model starting in August. I think Dave and I will just switch back and forth here, because we shared some slides here. So what we try to do with the latest draft of the plan, and you'll see that in the way that the -- what we're calling the schedule is now developed, is that, A, we want to reward and recognize teachers who complete a professional learning sequence. And I think this is ties in with what Leslie was saying about developing teachers, is that this plan really has evolved from a teacher compensation model to a teacher compensation professional development model. And so we have now created or created the idea of having professional development learning sequences where teachers would pick some area of study that is either specific to their subject area, or it's an initiative that the district has identified with, or somehow associated with national standards or state standards, and that there would be some link and tie-in between having some in-depth study and development and the whole SLO process and using data and developing students over a period of time. Secondly, we wanted to reward and recognize teachers for staying with the district over the years. And so there is a way of moving through the schedule, just as typically that has been done in the pre-Act 10 era, where salary schedules were very common. And then lastly, to go with the accountability piece that the community was concerned with, that we want to reward and recognize teachers for successful evaluations within the district.
All right, so if you picked up the pink sheet when you came in, we're going to take a look at some of the numbers on here. So one of the -- we felt one of the weaknesses of the previous plan was that it wasn't very predictable. A teacher could look at that and find where they were at that moment in time, but maybe not necessarily know where they would be in three years, or five years, or 10 years. So one thing we really wanted to try to do with this new version of this plan was make it a lot more predictable, so people would know, not only would teachers know, but the district would know, too, so they'd be able to plan for what they could and could not afford. So just some of the background behind this. So first of all, every teacher at the professional level would receive an increase of at least $1,500. And the reason for that is because we're adding five days to the teacher contract. There's also, if you take a look at the structure, every step down, so every row of the structure, we're calling a step, every step down has a 2% salary increase. So a teacher could look at this and see that next year, for example, their salary would be 2% more than it is this year, and so on and so on. Then you'll see the different levels on there as well. Each level has a $5,000 increase. Now, that's not a $5,000 per year increase. That's from the first step of, for example, the first step of Level A to the first step of Level B, there's a $5,000 increase. And then the two columns side by side, first column is for a bachelor's degree, and the second column is for a master's degree. And every number in that second column is $4,000 more than the first column to reflect that additional learning through that master's degree. So to go back on some of what John was saying, we feel that this is a lot more than just a compensation plan. It's also a professional learning plan. So what we want to do is guide teachers through continued growth throughout their careers. And we do that by creating these professional learning sequences, these three-year plans that our teachers would complete. So within a three-year period, teachers would complete a professional learning sequence. They would receive a successful evaluation, and if that is done within three years, then they would move on to the next level on the plan. So for example, if I started, let's just take a look at a number here. If I was at the Professional Level A with a bachelor's degree, I would have a salary of $48,500. I would begin a professional learning sequence at that time, and then next year, my salary would be, one step down, $49,470. I would continue working on my sequence. At some point during those three years, I would be evaluated. Hopefully, it would be a successful evaluation. And then after three years with that successful evaluation, and after completing the sequence, I would move to the next level, Professional Level B, where I would start another sequence. So we feel it's not just a compensation plan, it's a plan that incorporates what we want to see in all of our teachers, which is continued learning and continued growth. Leslie, you want to take this one?
Sure. So as many of you have seen before, we do have a professional learning sequence that's been used for personalized learning. And so that one, even though it would require some significant tweaks to be exactly what we're talking about in this particular scenario, that one was the inspiration for the idea of a professional learning sequence, which means people would start to explore, and then they use that to start to create their own vision, and then they engage with the learning. And they move through these steps collaboratively with others, putting together their learning and their experiences into action within their classroom. So it is our intent to develop several of them, several sequences collaboratively with administrators and teachers together on a committee, to reflect certain values or ideas that are very important to us in the school district, but in addition, also allow teams of teachers to put together sequences that are important to them, perhaps to their grade level or to a specific subject that they are teaching. So we have a lot of ideas on how to put these together, because we know a lot about what makes up effective professional development that impacts student achievement. So we know what it looks like. We know what type of topics we would have some of these on, but putting them together will be a collaborative effort that is probably beyond the committee. It will be another group of people who will come together to begin to put these sequences into action. But some of the things that we can think of right off the top of our head is the idea that one of our values as a school district is educational equity, so we would like to put together a sequence specifically devoted to helping people understand exactly what that means and how it plays out in their classroom, and what they can do to create an equitable environment. That's just one example. There are many. But the important thing is we'd be putting these things together collaboratively, and they would -- the ultimate goal of it is to benefit our students through deepening the learning of our educator staff. Anything else? Anyone would like to add on that?
The other thing that we really liked about our early versions of the model was the tapping into our internal capacity as educators here in the district to work with other teachers and to do professional growth together. So we had talked about, when we were talking about these professional learning sequences, it may be a case where a teacher or team of teachers does a three-year sequence, and they're ready to move on to a different sequence to work with different ideas for the students in their classroom. But we also discussed a possibility that maybe a teacher or a team of teachers really latches on and becomes quite expert at that area that they were studying, and over the next three years, their professional learning sequence would really be in a position to work with other educators in our district and to spearhead and lead in a way that they could work with other teachers going through that same sequence. So we still are trying to maintain as best as we can developing our internal capacity within our teaching staff.
So if you'd all like to go back to the pink sheet, in terms of how we would transition staff who are currently working with us to the new model, here is our thinking. In terms of the beginning educator step, we would place teachers on that step that corresponds to their years of experience in the Oregon School District, provided that no teacher suffered a pay reduction. So just to give you an example, all teachers that are currently in their first year of teaching with us are at $40,000 right now, so next year, they would move to the $41,310, assuming they had their bachelor's degree. If they had their master's degree, they would go to $45,310. Okay, so all folks within their first five years of teaching would be placed at the beginning educator level. Now, we do have folks that might be in that seven or eight years of experience, even potentially 10 years of experience, that are still in that $40,000 to $43,000 range because of the compaction that's gone on since Act 10. And so in order to give them what we consider sort of catch-up pay and to recognize their experience, those folks would at least go to $48,500 if they have a bachelor's, and $52,500. So it's really trying to separate the truly beginning educators in their first five years, everybody that has those five years under their belt, because research shows that you make such significant gains in your first five years of teaching, that folks at least that have that experience completed would move at least to Professional Level A. Okay, so those folks are going to get a little bit more of a bump than other folks, but right now, we do have people with nine years of experience making similar to a first-year teacher because of that compaction that's gone on. In terms of additional staff, as the committee said, what we would do is take their current salary, add the $1,500, and then put them on the step that corresponds to that salary. So just to give you an example, if someone was making $50,000 this year, I'd add $1,500, so $51,500. And let's say they have a bachelor's degree, they would go to Professional Level B1, because that's the closest step to the $51,500 that they're making now. In terms of the other thing that is a little bit of a transition question, is that let's say a teacher is placed at Step Three in a level. So just to give you an example, let's say they're at Professional Level B3, the $55,661. So the question came up, well, what do those teachers need to do? Because the idea is that the professional development sequence would be rigorous enough that it would take you three years to complete. But in order to move to C, they need to complete that and have a successful evaluation, which we do once every three years, once you get in the professional category. So what we talked about is during the first two years that the model's in place, we would have these steps that we have called, for lack of a better word, ghost steps. So there would be two ghost steps in between the levels, so teachers would get a little bit of an increase in the first year, or I guess the second year of the model, and a little bit of an increase in the third year of the model to give them time to complete a sequence, give them time to have an evaluation, and then they would go to Level C. So just to give you my example, let's say you were at B3 at $55,661. The next year, you might get $1,000. The next year after that, you might get $1,000. And then assuming you met our performance expectations and completed your PD sequence successfully, you would then go to Level C1 of the $58,500. And then once we're through three years of the model, those steps would go away. We wouldn't need them anymore, because everybody would be down the same track. I guess we have a small number of folks who are sitting at the top that are not leading, that would not be in the leading educator category necessarily, because that's an application process. And so we have talked about that we would negotiate longevity raises with the union every year under our legal obligations. So for example, let's say we have someone who's already at the $75,267 next year, that we would negotiate whatever that longevity increase would look like. And we don't, we have, you know, less than five folks that would be in that category. But otherwise, the schedule does match our current staff, which makes between $40,000 and about $76,000 is our top right now.
Anyone want to add anything to transition? So, Colleen?
Our next steps are to take the feedback that we've been getting from staff, we had two meetings last week, to take the feedback that we get from you this evening, and reconvene and make revisions as necessary or as needed. And I think, is that any other next steps? I'm forgetting. No, but Joe is going to talk about our next steps with the community.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you again, and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this committee. I was here, maybe not right at the beginning, but as it was moving along some time ago, and it's been really great to see how this has grown and changed. And one of the things that I think is especially good, and I'm going to brag about the group, they don't know that I'm doing this, I don't want to embarrass anyone, but what I think has made this such a great process, at least from my standpoint, is how this is connected to the district's vision, how this group is saying, "We're a really good district. We're a great district, but how can we get better? How can we get greater?" And so when I listened to the conversation, one of the things that was exciting, and I heard it again and again and again, is this idea of how can we get better? How can we get student achievement increasing? And to me, that was, I get excited about it. I thought that that was very cool. In terms of next steps, we've been working, as this has gone on, to create what I call an initial engagement plan. And essentially, what we're looking at is, this will come as no surprise, we're looking at doing a lot of the things that we did last time around, kind of building on that, sharpening the sword. And the bottom line, you heard me say it, you know, some time ago before the Capitol referendum, is to work as hard as we can to bring people into the fold so that they can understand the why question, right? The need, the why. This idea of how do we achieve the vision for the district? This terrific process that's been unfolding here. And to show folks all that's been done and why it is that this plan came together, and ultimately, the what is the solution. So part of this will be doing a lot of what we did before, which is a lot of hustling. So web pages, articles, we'll pitch articles to the newspaper, mail pieces, staff and community surveys, outreach to service clubs, the same types of things that we did before, and we want to have people understand. I always say, we want people to absolutely have every piece of information, have as much information as we can possibly provide, even if that means that they're going to go into the voting booth and be very comfortable voting against. That's okay, as long as they're engaged and they understand. So again, I just appreciate being a part of this. This is going to continue coming together, but again, the bottom line in terms of the engagement, we're going to build on the work that we did the last time around. Appreciate it. Yes?
With us today, we have Uriah Carpenter and Krista Plantigan, who at least one of those, perhaps both will be on the Board starting in April. So if you could just say a few words about who you are, what your job is.
Oh, sure. So again, my name is Joe Donovan. I'm sorry, who am I talking to? Oh, hi. Okay. Sorry about that. I'm Joe Donovan, and my firm is the Donovan Group, and I do work with school districts across the state, and have been working with the school district here on engagement. And so we did the survey, we helped put together the mail pieces and providing information so that we can inform and engage as many people as we possibly can in advance of the referendum. So is that fair in a nutshell?
Yes. Extremely important in our plan to have a successful referendum, or at least to get the people informed as to whether they want to have a successful referendum or not.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, we are happy to take questions. Dan, do you want to facilitate the question process, or what would you like to do?
I would love to. Thank you. And also, I just wanted to say, I talked with both Uriah and Krista earlier, and I invited them to ask questions, too, since the timeframe for voting on this is going to be near to the timeframe of the election, and I don't want, I want to have a smooth transition so that we don't have any surprised Board members if there are unanswered questions or opposition or need. I don't want to see a need for bringing people up to speed when we need to move this smoothly. So just having said that, we'll start with the plan.
And I'm just going to, if I could just, I'm going to grab this, because we have a Google Doc that we're keeping track of feedback in, so I'm going to take some notes. I'm wondering if you all want to come up here to answer questions? You guys want to come up? Because we have to, we're kind of tied to this mic, so I'm going to have the committee come up.
Oh.
Oh, that would be wonderful. They may have questions for you though, too, so we can take them.
I just have a clarification. With the Appendix A and the draft, the compensation salary schedule, for the first five years, it's based on year, and then after professional level, does that maintain like sixth year, seventh year, eighth year? Or does that change as, as you move up the scale? Or can you cert, you know, jump over some things, or how does that work?
So the way it's set up right now, the only, again, the steps are the individual rows and the levels are the different categories. So the only steps that really correspond to years with the district are the first five in the beginner educator level. And then after that, you are being placed, rather than based on other people with similar experience necessarily, you're being placed into the model based on this fifteen hundred dollar increase up to whatever level corresponds to that. And then after that, you do move through on a yearly basis, assuming that in each three years, you have completed the professional level, professional development sequence, and have the successful evaluation. So if you're on, on the eighth row, that doesn't necessarily correspond to years in the district.
And can I have a comment? So let's say that this is a new teacher who has had ten years of experience in another district. How, how does that person fit onto this, and who does the evaluation of their previous work?
So that would be me in consultation with Dr. Bustler and Mr. Wyland. But obviously, if they have ten years of experience, they're probably making more in their district. So we would place them, like we always have traditionally, in a place that corresponds with their experience.
One more. And is there any contingency, like for double masters and PhDs?
So, right now, we, right now, we don't do that in terms of double masters, and we were not looking, I guess, to change that, we hadn't talked about it. But if people have their, obtained their master's degree, then we give them credit for that. There's right now no additional compensation for a double masters built into the plan.
Okay, because there are people who have double masters.
And if that's, you know, if that's something that you're looking for, we would certainly take that feedback and work on that.
Okay, thank you.
And then something too, Gwen, that we, we considered as a committee, but we don't have an answer to that yet. And I'm gonna add National Board certification in there as well.
Oh, that's good.
And I know in the past when we were colleagues at the high school, that there was that double masters category on the salary schedule. Right now, it's not here, but that doesn't mean it won't ever be here, so it's still something we're considering.
Ray?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the math of this. Let's say there's someone who's currently making, oh, okay, well, say forty-two thousand dollars. So will they then get a bump of fifteen hundred, taking that up? And then you would take that number, and then the person is put into that particular step that you're talking about? And then from there, they move through the different steps and through the different levels? That's one question. And the other is, if you're a new teacher and starting at forty thousand five hundred, will these years then correspond with the various levels? Because I count twenty-one levels, twenty-one years.
If, I'll take the second one, because I think that's the easier one. If you are a brand-new teacher and you come on the schedule at forty thousand five hundred, and assuming this, the schedule is static, which I think we understand that, once the model's in place and things get going, that those levels are subject to negotiation between the OEA and the, and the district. But assuming it's static for the purpose of argument, then each of those levels, for a brand-new teacher on the model, would correspond to each new year of service in the district. Again, assuming that once they get down to the professional educator levels, that they are completing the successful evaluation and the learning sequence within the three-year time. The first question, the fifteen hundred dollar raise really doesn't apply to everybody. It applies to all professional educators. So if a teacher has five or more years of experience, and they have their professional educator license, then they are the ones who have, will get the fifteen hundred dollar guaranteed raise as they transition into the model. That's only during the transition, though, it's not a fifteen hundred dollar annual raise. It's, it's based on what the movement through the schedule says. The beginner educators, again, are being assigned into that beginner educator level based on the number of years that they have between zero and five.
Thank you, I clarifies a thing.
And, and Ray, I want to address another point you made. You said you counted twenty-one steps, and you counted correctly, but the one on the very bottom is actually not a step, per se? So there's actually twenty steps. On the bottom, that leading educator, the intention of that is that it's a new position within the district. And, how many positions were we?
Up to five.
We're, we're thinking that it'd be five new positions, and these may be people who are, you know, perhaps curriculum coaches, perhaps, you know, someone working very closely with, with Leslie on implementing new curriculum in the district. And we're, we're still, we're still deciding what their roles will be exactly. And that'll probably still be something to be decided down the road as, you know, as, as these positions come into play. But, but those numbers at the bottom aren't part of the salary schedule where, where any of us would eventually get to those levels. Those are for new positions with new responsibilities, with additional days of service to the district. So really, that last step is not a step at all. It's, it's for these five new positions that are being created.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Let's, let's just assume that we're done with the transition phase, and then a person, say, is in professional level B, and they, for whatever reason, decide or are unable to complete the education or the, the teacher progression steps in three years. Would, what would happen, would they remain at professional level B third year for the number of years it takes them to finish that? Would they be put in any other type of a, I don't know, a category where if you're in a specific spot for too long, that you're, you're looked at with the idea that maybe it's time for you to get out? Or is there any thought about just letting somebody remain in that third-year professional level B for as long as they want to be there?
So there's really two things that we've talked about. So one is that if you're working on your sequence, but you haven't completed it for whatever reason, you don't move a level until you've completed that sequence. So you would, in your scenario, you know, for one part, if it's, if it takes someone four years, then they would move after the fourth year, so when they've successfully completed it. Alternatively, we did have some, some teacher asked a question, I think somewhat, you know, sarcastically or facetiously. "Well, what if I just don't want to do any professional development? Can I just stay where I am because I'm happy making X?" And so, you know, I think from that standpoint, that in theory, you could do that, but then it would definitely show up in your evaluations. And I think if we had a teacher, and we don't on staff that I know of, that said, "I know everything I, there is to know, and I don't want to increase my learning in any capacity", I don't see that teacher being employed with us for very long. So, you know, in theory, could you stay somewhere and not do anything? In theory, under the plan, but I don't think you'd be employed here.
So then you would kind of stay maybe at, say, professional level B, three, a third-year salary? And you just keep getting that third-year salary until you finish the program and go to level C?
Well, and if, if the model's working correctly and you're on track, then by, if you were placed there in the transition year at the level three, then we have those two ghost steps.
Let's forget about the transition.
Right, but so you have the two ghost steps, and then you complete a level. So assuming you were meeting your performance obligations and completing your sequence, you shouldn't be sitting at anywhere. You're, you're moving, the intent is that you'd move every year.
If it takes you, say, six years to complete the sequence, my question is, are you gonna be professional level B with a bachelor's degree? Are you gonna be at fifty-five-six-sixty-one every year until you complete the sequence?
You would be at that step. However, because we have to negotiate every year with the OEA, that step amount may change, or it may not.
Right, okay.
Right.
Good. Then, let's see. So I guess, my question about inflation then is taking care of with the annual negotiation with the OEA, okay? And I know that there was some talk earlier about compensation for staff who aren't teachers, and dealing with that in this kind of a context. And then it wasn't clear whether, whether that was gonna be done. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, so what we've talked about, because this is a committee with OEA representatives, what our intent is that this would apply to anyone that's in the OEA bargaining unit. We do have licensed non-represented professionals, and right now, we have not talked about including them in this model because they haven't been part of the conversation. If the board wanted us to explore that, then my preference would be to go through the same process with them so that they have a voice in that process as well.
So, simple answers, this is only deal with teachers?
And counselors and speech and language, so anyone that's covered by the OEA collective bargaining agreement.
Gwen?
Going back to the qualifications for professional levels, who would approve outside study and what sort of opportunities would this include? You know, for moving forward in the, in the professional development, my understanding is that you could take on, a teacher could take on a project. And who would approve of that project? Is that jumping ahead right now for the process? And, you know, how, how would that be discussed so that certain ideas may or may not be shot down? Would there be, are, are wonderful, and, you know, who makes those decisions? The school principals, or administration, or?
So we're still kind of in the ideal phase. We actually had a similar question at one of the staff meetings, and we gave an answer we thought was probably accurate. But if you did, for example, a predetermined professional level sequence, then it's approved, because it's something the district put together or approved. We don't want to discourage teachers or groups of teachers from putting together their own sequences. So Leslie kind of put together a generic version of what was put together for the personalized learning, just to give us a sense of what it might look like. It's not set in stone that this is the formula that you use, it's just one way you could get there. So the question becomes, who approves that? Well, I think all of us on the committee think it's smart to tie in all of this professional development with your educator effectiveness work. And so, since that process is going through your building administrator anyway, it seems to make sense that if you're creating a professional learning sequence as a team or an individual, that you would vet that through the same, through your evaluator.
That was, for example, you had a sort of whole, for your, for your professional practice goals or your PDP. There was reference to that, and that's what I took that, that we would use the autonomy and mass repurpose, but it has to be linked somehow to your building or district mission as well. Okay, that's.
But it could be creative, too. I mean, in terms of, like, a study abroad and bring that in way, I'm, you know, I'm bouncing ideas out.
We, I, we don't have a preconceived notion of all the possibilities. We just have, I mean, we're really at a point, we don't, didn't want to spend a lot of time enveloping these and then hear from staff and school board, "No, we don't want to go this route." So we kind of came up with this, really, two or three months ago, it kind of blossomed into this model that you see now. And we don't pretend to put this, some limiting umbrella over what these would look like. We're, we're just really at a point, we'd like to give some concrete examples so that teachers have a sense of what they might do.
Sort of like teacher personalized learning. One other question. Is there written, or is that part of the handbook, or recourse to challenge and evaluation? If things, if there's a disagreement within that, would that be part of the handbook then still?
So there's two components to that, one is state law. And so state law requires that if you disagree with your evaluation, that you have a conversation with your evaluator. If you aren't able to meet, reach a mutually agreeable resolution, then you can attach a rebuttal, which then is attached to your evaluation, and that becomes part of your file. I think realistically, and I'll turn to Leslie to talk about the evaluation component, about how that works if you have a dispute about what evidence you see or not see as part of that process.
Sure. When the teacher or the educator and the evaluator meet for the end-of-the-year conference in May, no scores have been submitted, because that's time for the evaluator to say, "Based on the evidence, I see this", and for the educator to say, "Well, then, you know what? I think maybe there are some other pieces of evidence I want to show you before you submit final scores." So that last meeting is an opportunity for any of the disagreements to be ironed out based on the evidence provided. But in a really good process, people are talking about this all along, so that there are no surprises at the end of the year, and everybody knows where everybody's at.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I have several questions, and I don't want to hog the microphone, so if this gets too, gives old muscle chans. The first question, I hope this is pretty simple, I just want to make sure I understand it properly. It takes three years to complete a professional learning sequence, they can't take less than that? Is that accurate? Or is it possible to complete one in less than three years?
We, we envision that it would take anywhere from one to three years. We don't imagine that it would take less than one year. So if you go lights-out and you can do the learning sequence in a year, then it's basically a situation where, over the remaining time that you're at that level, you would be modifying your practice with students. But there isn't really a way to accelerate through the model if ultimately that's where your question is going.
It, it wasn't, but that's, that's a separate question. Okay, the reason I asked that was because I was wondering if, for the first three years of the plan, normally we would be moving a level, but if you can complete the sequence in less than three years, that'd be what could be.
That's what the ghost steps are for, though. So if you're, if, if you transition to step one, professional level B, step one, then you have the full time to complete a sequence. If you're on two or three, you are at a disadvantage for getting that sequence done, which is why we created these ghost steps during the transition period.
Right, gotcha. Is every single teacher going to move to this plan, or is there a way out, Deb?
Everyone will be transitioned to it.
Because I think at one point, we were thinking about giving people the option of opting out, right?
Yes, in the last model.
Yeah, can you explain why that was, I don't know.
So really, because we really transitioned our thinking to teacher learning, and that the professional development sequences really only work if you're vested in your own learning, and we might have to do them as like professional learning communities. And that's one of the reasons about the move to a hundred and ninety-five days, because what we're finding is that we really need time for teachers to get together and collaborate and learn from each other. And so building those days in the calendar gives us that additional time for them to do that. So, you know, logistically, wouldn't work if, let's say, like, the science department is working on the next generation's science standards, and, you know, they're really talking about rewriting their curriculum and redoing things if, you know, one member of that department isn't on the model. And so doesn't have those days built in, and isn't expected to do a rigorous professional learning sequence. And I think part of it is that we really believe in, in studying the PD that's effective. And it means it's lengthy, and it's intensive, and it has to be done well and intentional, which, a component of engaging student learners. So because we've So because we believe in this, we think it's important for everyone to be on it and on that same calendar.
And the opt-out was an option in the last model because with the increases in salary, we increased days up to ten, fifteen, twenty extra contract days. So people could say, I don't want to work that much, I have small children. So that why, that's why there was an opt-out in that model.
And another thing to add is I just asked Leslie if you had copies of this. At one point, not too long ago, Gina had forwarded us a document from. It was about rethinking professional development in schools and. Oh, it's, okay, it's referenced and there's call, it's on page two at the bottom. The National School Board Association Center for Public Education, 2013 Report, Teaching the Teachers: Effective Professional Development in an Area of High-Stakes Accountability. I think she's forwarding that to you so that you can look that over. It's like fifty, sixty pages, but there's a nice summary at the beginning. And we actually saw that after we had already started transitioning our thinking to this new model. And it was refreshing to see how it really validated this approach that we were looking at and how the way the districts have for years done professional development does not give long-lasting change in educational practice. And that this model that we're envisioning and why we don't want teachers opting out would be a more lasting effect on student achievement.
I noticed in the plan, I think one of the requirements where you can gain the next step is to have a two on your Danielson score. Correct. Could you explain how you came up with that number?
Well, if you remember the plan we brought to you last year, had just the qualifier for moving forward is not being on a plan of improvement. And we really liked that because we know that teachers who are in need of improvement with our exceptional evaluation process that we have right now, we are working hard with anyone who needs that sort of support and we can identify who they are and how to help them. So we thought that was an effective way to look at it. However, input from the community, and I believe if I remember correctly from the school board last year too, they were concerned a little bit with the accountability factor of it. Consequently, we went back and we decided what would be our lowest threshold for moving forward because we would consider the fact that having a three in every single component in a domain is expected. However, there are circumstances when really excellent teachers may earn one or two twos in a domain. One or two of the components may be twos for a variety of reasons. Consequently, it would be possible for someone we consider to be a very proficient teacher to not have a three, but a two-point something. So we, as we spoke about it with the OEA and with the committee, we decided that a two works for our purposes of accountability because we also have the really important and critical backup factor of teacher on plan of improvement. Because we know which teachers, and believe me, in this district, it is not a common occurrence for anyone to need a plan of improvement because we have such highly effective educators. But we know that when the time comes, that we may come across someone who needs an extra level of support. We know that we can use that as our tool and that would be a really effective means of doing so. I don't know if anyone else wants to add to a piece of that?
Thank you. I'm just wondering during your discussions, and maybe this is not just the last few months, but over the last three years, was there ever any discussion about placing less emphasis on a master's degree and perhaps more emphasis on demonstrated effectiveness?
Yeah, we've had, we've had that exact discussion, especially because in the model that we're sharing with you, we're really redefining what professional learning is all about. And in the past, like when I started my career, if I wanted to improve as a teacher, I went to an outside source and I got a master's degree. And then ideally I brought those new skills to my work with my students. With this model, we're really redefining what it's all about and saying, we want you to be learning through these three-year sequences and implementing as you are, as you're teaching, as you're going through the three years. And it's really redefining how we can all learn and grow as professionals. So we've had, we've had some pretty heated conversations about, all right, does the master still have that same value that it always had? But we've also come to realize that, hey, part of this is also the opportunity to partner with area institutions and say, if we're creating these three-year sequences, can we also tie that into gaining university credit and not having kind of the outside learning go away, but working with them to bring those two parts of professional learning together. So we've had the same exact discussions and there are people in our committee who agree and disagree with the emphasis on the masters or not on the masters. But I think we all realize that although the emphasis on the masters that was always there in the past, there still should be that emphasis there, but it's, it should be more of an integrated emphasis where when you're earning that master's degree, it's going along with these three-year sequences and it really is having this direct impact on what you're doing in the classroom. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
One more, yeah. Go ahead. Getting back to the topic that we brought before, John, about moving through the levels possibly quicker than one or three years. I'd like to know if the, if the committee discussed that topic. And the reason I would hope it would be possible to move through the levels faster than once every three years isn't just because you could complete a personal learning sequence quickly. It would be more because you've demonstrated you're a really top-notch teacher. You know, obviously I'm not a teacher, I'm a software developer, but I've been, I've been working with other software developers for twenty-five years. And, you know, tell me if the analogy is wrong here, but I've worked with brilliant people and I've worked with people that aren't so good. And the number of years that they've been doing it, there might be a correlation, there might not be. The certifications or degrees they have, there might be correlation, there might not be. So my concern is we've got a youngster that is obviously just a really great teacher and they can't achieve a higher compensation just because of the plan. Is that something you discussed and just, you know, would there be any way to do something for that superstar? And is, I mean, are those superstars, you know, people realize that they're there? And, you know, tell me if my analogy is wrong.
I think the way I'll answer that is this. We are trying to keep movement as objective as we can. And we think that the processes we described in the model fit that bill. Secondly, we kind of run into this whole issue of, you know, why did these steps that are very reminiscent of a salary schedule appear in the first place? And it really goes back to, we don't want to go to the community and ask for this referendum. And then we realize in three years that we can't fund it anymore. And so one of the pillars for us was sustainability. And I don't know if Andy's at a point yet where he can kind of give us a sense of what that is. But we would like as a committee to have, okay, what's our bottom line, the model? We want the model to sustain for X number of years for sure. And to make sure that that happens and have any kind of predictability on the district's part and to still have predictability on the part of the teachers to be able to say, hey, I can project where I'm going to be down the road. We really had to have, we call them speed bumps at Wed Point. Intentional stop gaps to prevent teachers moving too fast just because we didn't want it to run the model down to the point where we couldn't sustain it. So I think for sustainability and predictability reasons, we don't have that currently in the model. But we also feel that from what we've seen out there, that this model, if it goes forward, is better than other models that are out there and is more financially advantageous to teachers than other models that are out there.
Great.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, John asked a few of mine, so thank you for doing that. One of my questions has to do with the OEA negotiations. I notice that this is scheduled 2016, 2017. So I know we kind of were talking a little bit about this, implying that if the OEA negotiates an increase, like DPI increase, then will that be the schedule for that particular year? And then that increase will then go through this, all these numbers. So let's say it's one point oh-two or something, you know, or two point oh-eight, whatever. Does that change all those set of numbers for that year? And is that something we're projecting into the referendum going forward?
So that's every year that we, I mean, as Gina said, we've been doing this for three years. And every year we got to a point where we were kind of costing it, we ran into a problem because then we had new negotiated numbers and it changed, changed the whole game. It is not in the purview of this committee or the OEA members on this committee to give you a guarantee one way or the other. That's something that has to come from the OEA. But we have planted the seed with them that in order to be able to kind of hit a number for the referendum so that the board can plan and that we can figure out how we're moving forward, that it would be nice if we could have a set of numbers for 2016, 17 that we could be assured of. But we can't give you the guarantee for the OEA that that wouldn't happen. You're going to have to talk to Tracy about that. And unfortunately, she's not here tonight. She would have to drive from Edgerton to come here. But we are aware of that concern from the board's perspective.
And then the other question I have, I heard that the review of somebody would be done by, I believe I heard Gina and Dr. Bustler and Andy. And how is that similar or different than what's going on right now? How would the evaluation process be the same with this particular plan? Similarities and what are the differences?
So it'd be, and that was about new hire placement. So when the committee lets me know who they would like to make an offer to, then we start salary negotiations. And so it would be the same process that we do now. So I talk to the candidate, I have their materials. We talk about placement with Dr. Bustler and Mr. Wieland. And so really what I've been trying to do the last few years is just try to ensure that there's internal equity. So someone who has similar experience coming to us is placed somewhere similar to someone who's already internally here. And so, you know, I think we've been very fortunate that we have stayed competitive. But I do feel that as districts around us have new salary plans and we don't, that I am fearful of our ability to remain competitive moving forward.
Gwen?
With the evaluation process and the movement of this professional level scale, how does that parallel or does it parallel with DPI's certification and relicensing? Will that feed into that? And I guess my question is, will DPI accept some of this material as part of a renewal so that their licensure can move forward? Because this almost sounds like, you know, with getting a master's degree or something, you can, those credits are accepted by DPI. So I'm concerned that teachers might end up working more or less, or how does that work out?
So teachers who are on the PDPs, I think this would dovetail very nicely with them. For the ones who can get six credits over five years. Dave addressed that a little bit, that we had talked at one point, and I think actually Leslie was, was, this is kind of a vision of hers, that once we kind of get courses that we start developing in the district that might feed into these professional learning sequences, that if those are done in conjunction with, say, Edgewood or other, or Verturboro or whatever, that then those courses you're taking as part of the exploration and moving forward on a sequence would also then double up as the credits you would need for DPI research.
And eventually that six credits in five years will end up opting out because of the aging process?
Right.
Barb?
So I guess two questions. One is, and maybe you partially answered it already. How do, how does the professional development that's now happening in the district going to change so that teachers can get into one of the sequences that they're trying to complete? Or will they be going elsewhere to get what they need to complete a sequence?
Well, I think it'll be a little bit of both, Barb. That's a great question. I think that there will still be school-level professional development that fits into the specific goals of the students and the students' needs at that school. But in addition, will be the layer of these professional development sequences. And do we expect teachers to do it one hundred percent outside of their workday? No, we expect that there will be some overlap between them. And that perhaps, and I have not said this to administrators, so I don't want to commit them to anything, but in the future, perhaps there's a certain small segment of in-service time that's devoted to allowing people to meet, talk about where they are with their sequence and what their next steps are, a professional learning community type of situation.
And then my next question might be for you too, Leslie. So the scoring number two, number three, number four, that correlates with the Danielson?
That's correct.
And a number two would fall under the basic column?
That's correct.
Okay. Here's my concern, and that is that as people get into these higher salary ranges and more years of experience, I'm a little concerned that number two is sort of a low standard. And I do get this thing that it might be hard to hit all threes because all of us have our strengths and our weaknesses, areas that we just don't do as well, and, you know, our jobs, whatever. But when some of these criteria under the basic column, to me, are a little bit of a low standard for people who are getting into these higher salary ranges. And did I say, hear you say, that those kinds of weaknesses could be addressed through a professional, through a improvement plan? So for instance, at the end of an improvement plan where somebody has met those expectations, they might be more towards the three column than towards the two column?
Yes.
So the goal is that somebody's, somebody is going through the professional development sequences, they're meeting those criteria, but yet their practice is remaining at the two level. You have a way to address that before they move into a higher salary range?
If there were an experienced teacher who was a two and despite coaching, wasn't going further than a two, then it wouldn't even really be an issue for the teacher comp plan. It would be an issue of performance, how to help that teacher become a more effective teacher. Because someone who's been teaching for twenty years, everybody can have a difficulty in one area or another. But we should also be working to strengthen our area of, areas of difficulty. And we're, none of us, none of the teachers that we work with would ever be content with, eh, you know, I'm a two and that's all I'm going to be. That's not where we're at, that's not how we approach things.
I assume that the probationary period would not be necessarily part of the plan with a part of the handbook?
Yes.
We have, we have a recommendation in the plan, but that would be a board decision.
Okay. Have we, we have not instituted a probationary period yet since we, we brought the handbook in, right?
Correct. We have no probationary period right now in the handbook.
Okay. Couldn't remember if we had addressed that yet. Okay. Level E, professional level E, do you envision that there would be any professional development sequence since there's really no advancing beyond that?
We've only briefly touched on that. We don't envision adding level F. And we've talked about having longevity once a teacher has passed through E, but we've also discussed, but haven't really fleshed out what that would look like, that we don't want teachers just languishing after they've gotten through E, that there would be some expectation of continued development even beyond.
Yes, and you'll see that in the yellow packet, that in order to receive those longevity increases, you have to meet performance expectation and be working on your sequence. So that would be an expectation of every teacher regardless of which level you're in.
Okay. I noticed, it doesn't show up on the pink sheet, but online, the professional level D and professional level E with the bachelor's degree is kind of highlighted. Is that because it's not expected that people will be in those categories with only a bachelor's degree? Or maybe that was just something that showed up on my electronic copy?
No, and you'll, so D and E are shaded, and what we've talked about is, we had conversations about how far do we feel that you should be able to go as a bachelor's degree without having a master's degree? So what the intent of that is, is for teachers that are in the professional level B or A or beginning educator, that as they move through, that they would only go through level C, step three, and that they would stay at that step unless they have a master's, then they would move over. However, for current staff that are in the shaded level or in level C, that they can go through and would be quote unquote, you know, grandfathered in. And so what I'm thinking on that is that we want to encourage people to get a master's degree to move over their lane. And that's something that was pretty typical in the pre Act 10 world, that you could only move so far with a bachelor's and then you would be moved over. And so that's just, you know, putting that emphasis on continued learning and honing your craft as an educator, but recognizing that there may be folks that, you know, don't have as long to work in their careers as others, and so they may not want to make that investment at this point, that this model comes for that. Want to add?
Yeah. As Dave talked about, we've had pretty lengthy discussions about the whole master's degree component. And I, I personally was one who, very early in my career, I didn't know that a master's degree was necessarily the best way to go. And Jeff gave some reasons why that, that might be the case. Nevertheless, I went to get my master's degree and I found it to be a very challenging and very rewarding experience, and I think it did have a profound impact on how I work with kids in the classroom and the level of expectation I have for them. That being said, this board historically has wanted teachers to get master's degrees. And we in fact changed the salary schedule at one point, might have been as early as the late 90s, where we did the same kind of thing that you're, that you're pointing out on the model, that we would basically blank out high years of experience in the bachelor's plus arena to entice teachers to try and get that master's degree. But for this committee, it keeps coming down to, you know, we have different opinions on the committee about what, what the importance of that master's degree, but we really don't know what that priority is for this school board. Has that changed? And so I would personally, and Dave was saying the same thing, it'd be really nice if we could get some direction from you on the importance that you think a master's degree is for teachers. For me, it's, you know, somebody who's going into education and teaching children and not going that extra step and getting more education as a model of that, I have a problem with that, I guess, but we really need to hear from the school board. Jeff, you want to comment on that?
You know, you said you'd like our feedback. And not being a teacher, I can't give you an educated opinion because I don't know your world. So I mean, I would look to Leslie or Brian or you folks to tell us just how critical is that master's? Because, you know, like the examples I gave before, John, I'm still learning stuff every day. I learned, the last two months in my job, I've learned a ton. And I wasn't at university, I wasn't getting a degree, but I'm still learning a ton and I'm still becoming better. So I'm looking for you guys to tell us just how important that piece of paper is. How's it translate to differences in the classroom?
Gwen, did you have something on that topic?
Yes. Having spent time working on masters and as, early in my career, I completed one, and then in the middle of my career, I completed another one. And Jeff, I have to tell you that being in the academic world helped me to be a better teacher. And it, and even though, it's really interesting, one of them you might say is outdated at this point, but it really isn't because I keep going back and thinking about it and looking at all the new research and all the new ideas that are coming with it. And it helps to move you, it helps to move the thought processes forward, see what's happening at the university. I guess my other concern would be, is that with the cost of education being so high at this point in time, that I am also very interested in, you know, allowing people not to pursue master's degrees. I mean, personally, it was a wonderful opportunity and I would go and get a PhD if it was cost effective, but it's not so. But allowing people to make that decision, I think with this particular model, is very thoughtful. And, you know, some people learn really well in an academic environment and some people can learn on their own. I mean, that's what we've been studying with kids, and it's the same thing with adults. So I like the, I like to have the opportunity that yes, you can, no, you don't have to because your, because your, your comments to Jeff are really important. So is it important? Yes. Is it important to allow other options? Yes.
And the thing, when you look at the appendix, it says masters, but one thing that we have discussed in committee, we just haven't revisited in a while, is are there other kind of equivalent means you could use to get there? And so I'm going to float these as ideas because since we haven't revisited them again under the guise of the, of the new model, I don't want to say that's the way it's going to be. But we had talked about, for example, if you get a national board certification, some would argue that's a more rigorous process than it is to getting a master's degree, and would also argue that that has far more direct classroom implications than a master's degree. So could we really change the heading to be masters or national board certification? Then you get to the question of, well, you have to renew that every five years or something. So do you have to like keep redoing that, or does it count once you get it, you know, for us? Another thing that Charlie has been a big proponent of has been kind of having a portfolio. So we might have teachers here who have been here for 20 years, never got a master's degree, and now they see that that puts a dam in front of them in terms of moving forward. And I think he was the one that said, well, hey, let's have, have a portfolio. And, you know, maybe they've, over the years, they have kind of done the equivalent of a master's degree in the, kind of the coursework they've done, or different professional development things that they've done. The only problem is that we haven't really fleshed out what that might look like. But we've talked about other, other ways of kind of showing that growth besides a master's. But the master's was the one that was really objective and easy for us to work with.
I saw one more question, but Steve, I know you wanted to talk, is that on a specific master's topic? No. Okay. So my last one was the, what about individual or groups of teachers bargaining such as we have with tech teachers? And does this plan, have you discussed that? Would that be forbidden? Would there be any ability or exceptions?
So I guess to answer that, the board would always have legal ability to award teachers supplemental pay. With the tech ed teachers, you know, that was a proposal that came to the board and the board approved. I don't think that we have the authority to say, you know, to limit your power in that respect. Obviously, we hope that we have a very competitive model here and that we would be able to retain and attract the highest quality teachers, but that's a legal ability that you have that, you know, we haven't, we haven't discussed.
And Dan, to continue on that, I think one of the intentions of, of this plan is that it is going to be competitive enough, in fact, more than competitive, so that groups of teachers or individual teachers don't have to go and bargain outside of this.
Okay. Gwen?
This is just a statement, and I'm sitting here thinking, I am so impressed with the depth of thought and that has gone into your, your committee work in this particular model. And I just want to make sure that, I want to thank you for all your hard work. It's, it's coming together and it has some to lose. So thank you.
Steve?
Is it anticipated that if you're in the professional level E, that at some point on this plan, you might be making more than a lead educator? Assuming, I know the thought process was, we don't want to freeze them out there, we're not quite sure what that process would be. And if we do have that process, would we be making more than a lead educator?
We actually haven't discussed that. I do know that we lowered at one point the leading educator in salary to deal with the cost and sustainability piece. And in fact, originally, I think we had up to 12?
Ten.
Ten, ten positions set aside. And just like you are well aware of, the easiest thing to do to try and cut money out of something is to go after staff because that's where your, your biggest chunk of money is. And we heard the community that, boy, that's expensive. And so that was the easiest thing to do, is to cut down that very expensive item.
Just a point I don't want to be working through, but we'll have to answer it. That's why I asked. And I think answering my second question on the lead educator is, we've got five designated here and there's six buildings. To me, it would make some sense to have one lead educator per building. But I don't know if that's, if you're designating the lead educators to be building oriented or otherwise, so that was a question.
I think our intent was to have one or two at each building. And I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you, I don't want to put a building to the disadvantage, but one way that you could do it is that you could have, for example, one person share between Prairie View and Netherwood, being proximally close to each other, not ideal, but that would be one possible way of dealing with it. We'd also discussed about, I mean, David talked about, kind of talking, you know, what will those people do? And at the same time, we wanted to leave some leeway up to individual buildings to decide what that person would do as their needs dictate.
That'd be one area that I would flush out some more is that lead educator area. Do we have one guaranteed per building, or are we going to let it float depending on the qualifications of the applicants? And then another question on the lead educator is, we're restricting that to a three-year term or not? Or is that going to be at the option of the lead educator to move back? Tell me a little bit about that in your contemplation or the discussion that you've had on that.
So we haven't, as you can tell, we haven't talked a lot about that position. We've kind of took our old thinking and put it into the new model. And what we had talked about before is that similar to like the administrative intern, that that's a three-year position where your, you know, prior job is being held while you have that process. And so we just sort of thought about the same thing, that what we heard from teachers is that they want the ability to be in that leadership capacity, but maybe they don't want to be administrators. And so we definitely have, you know, talent on our staff that we feel that people, like let's say we have an initiative that the board tells us, we really want to focus on our English language learners. And so maybe that's something we have a leading educator work with us on. Or if we really want to, you know, talk about our math curriculum, you know, K6 and 712, that we hire someone for that. And so that was the thinking, similar to like the mentor position that was created, that you have someone that's in that job for three years and then they could go back to the classroom if that's what they want to do. So it's sort of taking, you know, things we already have exist in the district and placing that into the model, but that's, that's all open for discussion and feedback.
I have one more thing too. We'd also talked about, one of the, one of our pillars was that every teacher kind of had equal access to all parts of the model, that with planning and with longevity and structure, that you could access all parts of the model. So that position ends up being one that by virtue of limited numbers, not everybody would have equal access to it. And for example, we had talked about, you, maybe we get somebody in there and they're really enjoying it and they're in there in perpetuity, and in the meantime, we have all kinds of young talent coming in who maybe could serve very well in that same role. And they don't have access to that until the person leaves. And so I think part of our thinking was to keep that equal access to kind of limit it to three-year terms.
There was just a note about a professional workday. Can you explain that more in terms of, that was?
Page five?
Yeah. Yeah. Under the additional detail, educators will have a professional workday. What are you anticipating with that? Is that part of the additional five days?
So this is reminiscent from the old model, that you'd have a professional workday. So rather than, you know, counting the hours, getting paid for some extra things that essentially, as long as you were there to meet your professional obligations, that we would move more to a model like Stoughton has, where teachers have a professional workday that aren't, you know, to move to more professional than an hourly model.
Is that still relevant in this model?
I think it does, because the idea is that with the, what we talked about before, is that with the increase in compensation, that we sort of move away from paying all, maybe the, you know, smaller duties that we do now.
It would be, as part of the 195, we're thinking that it would be one day that we're not scheduling through in-service or professional development. Is that the intent?
Right. It's the same as we have a professional level now, that those, those would be days on the calendar. It doesn't mean that some of them you couldn't float or flex in a different capacity.
Would it be another that this would be a four-day or five-day?
I think it would just depend on what our needs are and what the calendar looks like for that year.
Okay. Thank you. Is the plan that we had before, the IEPs, were part of the, part of the plan that did get additional compensation and now in this plan, they are getting additional compensation? Can you explain why the shift?
Because I think, because, in order to Because I think because, in order to scale back the financial cost, teachers aren't receiving as much of a lift as they did in the old plan and then just looking at and talked, you know, and talking with people services, that there's just a lot of time spent outside the normal workday that folks are spending in IEP meetings.
The other, the former plan before us had $210 designated for credit for the master's degree. Is that part of this or is that out?
For financial reasons, that's out right now, but Andy Wyland and Leslie Bergman and I and Dr. Bustler were just talking today about is there a way to maybe put it back in? But I think it's all going to come down to cost.
Okay, so.
And we haven't talked about that as a committee, we just talked about it this morning.
How about the other forms of compensation that we have designated in the handbook like teacher's teacher and that sort of stuff? Is that still going to be in this?
We haven't talked about that.
At some point, and I don't know if we're able to do that tonight, but to get an explanation from the committee as to how we got the numbers for the various levels. I know the 1,500 comes from because we are contracting for more days, but for example, how do we get the, the spread between professional A and B and B and C, they're different. They're different percentages as I calculate them, so how do we get those? And then the same question, we have 2% rises in the steps and how did we get to that number? And did we do a costing of that or is this just meant as a draft? Because one of the things I'm thinking is if we're going to do costs of living jumps in 2%, so at one point are we going to say that we don't have a budget for that? And I, I know we have a flexibility to say no on that, but do we readjust those steps? Have there been discussion about making those steps smaller? Larger?
I'll, I'll try to answer your question. First of all, it is just a draft, so a lot will depend on the costing. When Andy comes back with the, with the numbers, some of these may be adjusted up or down. But to be honest, the, the 2% is, is an arbitrary figure and it's based on, it's, to me, it's based on a couple of things. Lately, the cost of living or the CPI has been around 1.4% and we wanted to, we wanted to have some numbers in there that were higher than that, you know? We're, we're trying to attract and retain and we're able to tell new teachers as they're coming in that they're not limited by that 1.4% every year. That would be a, that would be a great way to bring those people in. And then, you know, you're right, if you're looking at a percent, like, for example, if you look at the third step of professional level A to the first step of professional level B, as a percent, that percent is different than from the third step of D to the first step of E. And the intention is it's, you know, you do have these, these percents as steps and then you have these bigger jumps. And the bigger jump is based on a dollar amount. And, and in my mind, I remember back when, when I was on negotiations before Act 10 and we would, we would always negotiate, okay, do we give everyone a percent increase, which the teachers making the most money get the biggest raises? Or do we give everyone a flat salary increase where the teachers at the bottom of the scale get the biggest percent raise? So to me, this kind of marries the two. It's saying you get your percent increase annually and then you get a, a set dollar amount at the end of your professional learning sequence. So it's, I, I hope it's seen as the best of both worlds and it's putting those two ideas together.
With the indication, it seems correct in my heart that the, the bigger dollar jump should be when you're moving from the levels as opposed to the stops.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, to really emphasize that, you know.
That's the philosophy behind how we're going to scale this.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And I just want to address a part of your question, Steve, and this is something that we've talked about. But I just wanted to make sure in terms of our proposal, that what our thinking is, is that this will be the 16, 17 schedule, but just like sort of in the pre-Act 10 world, and I know you're familiar with this, that we wouldn't guarantee that any, any cell would change in any given year, you know, that's subject to negotiation, just like pre-Act 10, is you didn't always know if you were going to get a step, if that step was going to increase, if that cell was going to change. And we want to make sure that this model is affordable. And so from that aspect, we didn't want teachers to think every year you're going to get a cost of living because in five years, I don't know what the cost of living is going to be and I don't know what our state funding is going to be and I don't know what our student growth is going to be. And so we just wanted to be really careful that staff weren't expecting what they've thought of as a cost of living increase because so far, we've been lucky that we can afford it because it's been relatively low. But we don't know what. I'm sure it's less than one, potentially, right? But I, you know, I don't know what that future looks like and so we just wanted to be really careful to kind of separate that conversation from this model. And obviously, to stay competitive, we, you know, want to give our, our teachers a competitive wage increase every year, but that's really subject to negotiation every year with the board and the OEA. So I just wanted to be, I just wanted to make sure that you know that we were cognizant of that and we've been careful in how we've talked about it with staff.
And the other thing is it's, it's not completely arbitrary that the numbers that Dave mentioned because we did have, well, what's the lowest we want teachers coming in at so they're competitive with other area districts? Where's kind of the highest we're at now and we need to pay attention to the affordability in the context of the numbers of teachers that are going to be there or get there? And at the same time, very early, we actually had the model set up like two years ago, so that teachers would move through very, very quickly to the highest levels, which then we ran into the sustainability issue. So we started adding these different steps to kind of put the brakes on that a little bit, but I think all that stuff together makes it kind of less than arbitrary and almost necessary to have it structured that way so that it's predictable and then you can move through it.
Dan, that's all I have in terms of just questions, pure questions about the plan.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on how professional you've all been in developing this plan and putting it together and explaining to us. I think it's been a phenomenal job, so thank you. And I do see, I don't see this as being arbitrary, looking from level A to B to C to D, isn't it like a $5,000 increase per level? So to me, that makes sense, you know, $5,000 here, $5,000 to the next level, only 2% in between. So I see that as something that, you know, Mr. Ebert was saying is very fair. You have a percentage when you're going from steps, it varies, 20 steps, but you have the, the equivalent amount of money, $5,000 per level. So to me, that seems like it really works both ways. So I'm very impressed by this and I, I think it's something that you put a lot of work into and that it shows in terms of what you've come up with, so thank you.
Joe? I wonder if you could give us your thoughts on timeline and the major points that the board and the administration would have to go through in order to best get the word out and get any feedback that we might want to get? And your, your recommendation as to also further feedback that we might want to get and how we might get that?
Sure. Well, I, I think, I think first, it's, it's been good, I've been scribbling notes, just listening to the great questions and, and I think that there's, again, some work should be done here by the committee to come back, finalize this. Built into this effort is both a survey to staff and, and I'm suggesting and, and I know the, the committee and administration very interested in doing a community survey. Again, again, we have that baseline data from last year. It's important for us to come back and take a look at how we may have moved the needle as it relates to changing the plan. I think, then we'll come back and we'll go through a process that will look very similar to what we did last year, which is where I'll bring a roadmap, we'll walk through it and again, we'll use some things that we'll, we'll have informed ourselves and build on what we learned last year. I think the most important thing that I can share with you tonight, from my perspective, is that there's a tendency, I find, with an operational, it's different in a lot of ways in terms of the engagement from a capital. A capital referendum, you get to point at, you know, bricks and mortar, this is what's going to happen. There's going to be, you know, changes in the school that we're going to be able to see. Here, I think that there's a tendency, because of the good work of the, of the committee and the work that's gone in, as board members, you can really get into the weeds, you know, on, on this. And again, the committee is very, very, I was really impressed with the detail that they've gone into. The challenge that we have is going back to community members and those folks who aren't as up to speed on this as you are. We want to be able to provide that information if they want it, but again, I think that it's also important to just kind of take a step back and to say, this is, let's answer the why question. The why question is because this is a district that's very, very good, but it seeks to become even better and it achieves its mission, its vision. So again, I encourage the board members to see as part of this narrative, the effort around the, the vision. And that's why I was impressed and Leslie spoke to it a minute ago, that's why it's so important, I think, to link these, these things. So again, that's the, that's the message that I'll carry to you to say, get into the weeds if people want to get into the details, but again, as you're out talking about it, understand that you have to approach it differently than you would a capital referendum and it starts with why we're doing this in the first place. So again, we'll have a full roadmap, it'll look similar to what we did last time. And again, what I'll ask you to do, just as you did during the capital referendum, is really hustle and try to connect with as many people as you can.
So can you talk about rough months and timelines and what months we should be thinking about doing certain things?
We're not, we're not quite there yet. We, we've started to kind of flesh things out and looking at the calendar. I, I would be, it would be premature for me to go into a lot of detail on that at this, this point. That's going to come soon though, I promise, but I'm not quite there yet.
So we know one month is November.
One month is November.
Right, so that's not going to change if we can say.
That's not going to change. And so we'll, we'll, we'll back things up. So again, I think that what we found last time is, is it was helpful to do several mail pieces. That was some of the feedback that I received, I think we'll do that again. Important piece of this will be a, a survey, we'll be, we'll be asking board members and administrators to go out to the community and do presentations. In terms of the things that we do, that won't change, but in terms of when we're going to do things, specifically the survey, we have to kind of figure that out. Gina, do you want to?
So as I say, Joe has been working on a draft work plan with us and we've been reluctant to sort of show that because it is a work in progress, but given your questions, I will go ahead and share that with all of you so you can see what we're thinking.
It's very much a draft, really, very early, but just kind of moving some things around and again, it will base, be based on the work of the committee.
So from your feeling then, without saying months, are we paced? Do we need to play ketchup? Do we have enough time to do the things that we need to do in order to get the community up to speed and involved and prepared for this referendum?
I am very happy with where you are right now. I, I see this, I see the, the committee moving quickly and doing very good work. I think that the, the plan that's been mapped out by the committee is, is, provides enough time. So I'm, I'm happy where, where we are and I don't see, I don't anticipate any big, any big slowdowns. And certainly, if this is something that the board wants to do, I would, I would, you know, suggest continuing, moving along just as you are.
So would the board need to meet with you again before we launched any surveys, et cetera? Or would you?
Absolutely.
Most likely be working with administrators and not the board necessarily?
I'll, I'll continue, it'll be a, a process, I anticipate a process very similar to, to what we did before. I, I talked with Gina and Leslie and Dr. Bustler, not daily, almost daily at this point. And so as we're putting things together, we'll be bringing things to you, again, just as we did last time around.
All right. Any other questions for Joe? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you again.
Okay, at this point, we will move to the part of the discussion where board members will discuss amongst ourselves. Unless, did, did, Uriah, did you, or Krista, did you have any questions for the, for the committee or for Joe? Anyone else in the, in the audience have any questions or concerns that they wanted to air? Great. From the committee, any final statements or anything? Okay, I want to give each board member that wants to a chance to give some feedback. Keep in mind, please, the three questions that Gina had asked us and I will just read them again, unless you have them really close to Andy, Gina?
So what we, what we talked about is what do you like about the plan, what's missing from the plan? But I think the most critical question is what key components do you need to see in order for you to support the plan?
Okay. So those are the three questions that the committee would really like answers from the board. And so it's important for us to, to start to try to make this close to what we want to bring to the community, at least to get feedback from, but it should be starting to take close to be what's going to be the final form with tweaking by the board and once we get some feedback. So Barb, do you have any?
Oh, I'm really happy with it. I think it's really improved a lot since the earlier versions. And to me, you know, the money piece is going to be important because I think we'll all have a sense when we have a figure, is this realistic or are we going to have to adjust to have something that's got a chance of passing? So the, the structure of it, I really like.
Steve?
There are, there are three things that I really, really like about this plan and I really, really like where it's headed. One is it's, there's a consistency with our district's vision and, and the visioning committee is working on the next iteration of a strategic plan. We're working with stakeholders on that. But, but there is within that plan and this plan that we got to tonight was this notion that our learners should have some autonomy and mastery or purpose over what they're doing and flexibility and that not everybody's the same. And I think when we start walking out with the visioning paper, you will see that articulated, that there's a broad sense of moving in that direction in terms of learning plans and defining learners, not only to include our students, but also our educators and so that everybody's learning under the same vision. So there's a really, there's a consistency there. I was never a fan and always had a trouble with that middle section in terms of working with hours and I really liked that we're, I used to call that a compliance model and I've never been a big fan in terms of grading and graduation credits with more of a compliance model as opposed to kind of a professional learning model. And this is, this seems to be more professional model where we don't have to have you guys write out hours and keep track of hours and that, that we trust one another, that you get on a plan with your administrators that is relevant to you and serves the district and improves education in the district. So I call it a move from a compliance model to a professional model and this, this really does it. There's a lot of flexibility. I've looked at the other, the third point is I've looked at the other plans that have been adopted in the county and just eyeballing the ranges from start to end and in the middle, we're not only consistent with us, but this makes us really competitive in those areas. And so one of the things that I'll look for is, you know, some more flushing out of that detail for us in terms of the costing, but we're going to have to sell to our community the dollars here and my eyeball test is what we've got on paper is consistent with that. I want to look at, we had a conversation about the 2% of steps, whether that's going to make us sustainable or not. going to make us sustainable or not. I like the set dollar jumps for the levels as opposed to percent. That makes a lot of sense, Dave, because we've always struggled with that and how to do that. The other thing that when we go out and sell this plan is that, for market reasons, we have put money at the beginning level, and we know that that has caused significant compression, and I've run a chart with that with our schedule, a scatter shot chart, and a graph chart that we can look at, but we've got significant compression there. The other thing we haven't done is rewarded our top-end teachers where they worked late on, just because of budgets. And so when we sell this, that would be part of the message, is that while we've taken care of part of the market, we haven't taken care of the other part of the market.
Go ahead.
As a former teacher, I find this plan to be extremely motivating, and meaning that if I was the owner teacher, I would really want to buy into this because it allows for options. I think the money is very fair. It's hard to think about, back in the day in the 1980s, starting salaries were $16,000. And this is treating educators as they should be, as the professionals that they are. And I think that this is, again, I can't thank you enough for dedicating so much time to this. It's coming together. My only concern, I guess, and this is just a word of caution, and, or not even that, I guess, but I think that the plan is, it's not complicated, but it is detailed. And this is more of a concern, I guess, for Joe, is that how do we present this, or how do we sell this idea to the public so that it's understandable that this is money well spent, because our teachers are so professional, and we want to bring in the best, and we want to retain the best? So that is my concern, but I think that that has nothing to do with, well, it actually does have everything to do with how incredibly organized and detailed that the plan is. And I see it as almost, you know, just a few bit of tweaking, like we've talked about, and I think we're getting ready to go and present it, but, you know, how do we create those bullet points so that it is very accessible to the non, you know, to parents and to people who are not, don't have children in the school district? How important. And I see this as sort of a mending process as well, about, you know, teachers have been kicked around since Act 10, and I think that this is an amazing vote of confidence for our teachers, and that I'm very proud of being sitting on this board and supporting this.
I really like this plan, and I've been happy to see the committee be very receptive to the concerns from the community and from the board, especially regarding the evaluative component with being tied to compensation and moving through the levels and the steps. The fact that a teacher cannot move from one step to the next, or not move from one level to the next, I'm not sure about moving steps if they have a plan of improvement. And that takes care of, I think, what I saw as one of the largest problems that people came to me with concerning this. And I know it was a difficult issue for the committee to deal with, and I think that it's been done well, because we know that there's no possible way to create a system that's going to say, we are going to identify each teacher and evaluate them according to their value to the students, and then give them their exact pay according to the value to the students. There's no way to do that. So there needed to be some component, and I think it's an effective component there. My major concern, and it's not negative about this plan, is the concern for the cost. And I think that the committee has been very conscious of the fact that, though, even with this schedule, it's a raise for most teachers, but it's still not what they professionally should be paid according to their work and the value to students and to the community. So the compromise is there, where I think also handled very well in taking into account what do teachers make now? Let's not bump up the highest paid, and just set the high, you know, the top of our scale now, at the top of this scale, but then even everything up between the bottom and the top. And I see, really, that's all we're doing. We're not, we're not asking for a raise for everybody. We're just saying, let's even out the pay between, so that we don't have this compression at the bottom of the scale, which I think was actually, well, cynically, it seems like part of the design in Act 10, to keep teachers' pay low, and it's worked since Act 10. And so let's correct that. I think this does a good job, at least for the next few years of correcting that. I don't know how this would work in the long term. Seems to me it's been thought out, but of course, we could change it as the time would dictate. So what do I like? Those are the things that I like. What don't I like about this plan? Well, what I don't like, yeah, is we don't know what this would cost exactly. I think some numbers have been crunched. Does anyone, I guess this is a question right now, does anyone have a round number for where we would start out with this if we did pass this? No? Okay. So that's certainly something that people are going to wonder about, and I would need to know more about that before I vote for this plan, but.
Dana, the reason is that we want to hear your feedback tonight, and then see what changes we need to make, and then we will do a detail of costing.
So, yeah, and I assume that these numbers would perhaps change up or down depending on where the costing came out, but we could still maintain the general scheme of things if we thought that if we wanted to shoot for a particular number, one way or another, and I can see how this could be adjusted fairly easily if we thought it was too expensive or we could afford more, because I think that if we could afford more, I wouldn't have a problem with finding where we can give raises a month in this schedule bring up. Third question, what do I want to see in the plan? I think I would be ready to vote in favor of this plan with some, you know, a few more details, like professional level E, what would the continuing education look like in that, how would we endeavor to keep our senior teachers engaged in the learning process and incentivized to keep innovating instead of languishing, say, at the top of the pay scale? Okay, that's it for me. Ray?
I think it's very good comments. I think it's very well organized. I think it is understandable. This is the kind of plan, I think, we could take to the community and they would understand it, because of these $5,000 increase per level, two percent increase per step, that some people can then understand. But what's more important, I think, that the community did say in the visioning conference that one of the biggest priorities for them is that we want to retain our teachers and we want to support them. So I think we really do have a community that wants to do this, and that we're in a good position to follow through with this referendum. And it's something that I know we've been talking about for many years, so I think you've done an excellent job with this. I like the fact that there's the component of professional development. I like that there's evaluation as part of this process. I very much like that there's the educational component, bachelors to be masters. Possibly you could put masters in equivalent, as we're talking about, I think that might be something that we should think more about, to be somewhat flexible as far as people's learning and how they can advance professionally. I think what I would like to see is, what is missing is just the numbers, the overall plan, what will this cost? We all know that. And I think what I'd like is, if we do have enough money and we cost this out, I'd like to see if we could bump up the leading educator number. Five, to me, does seem a little small. I understand where you're coming from, and that you're trying to keep this competitive, something that the community can get behind. But if we find the numbers coming lower than what we expected, I think that might be an area where we can put a little bit more into it. And again, as we're talking, to incentivize people who are at that level, and maybe more people could have that as an option for them. So overall, I think it's stupendous. I support it, and I'd love to go to the next level. So thank you all.
Joe?
I'm very happy with how clear and concise the plan is. It seems to be much more straightforward than the last iteration that we saw a few months ago. And another thing I'm happy about is, I'm hoping, I need to see the final numbers, but I'm hoping it's going to raise our salaries, not just to be competitive, but hopefully at the top of the list compared to our peer districts, because that's one of the reasons we want to do this, is to attract the best. So I'll be interested in seeing what those final numbers are and how they compare to other districts in the county. As far as what the plan is missing, ideally, I would like to see a little more leeway for advancement through the steps. As I mentioned during the questioning, I understand why that's problematic. It introduces a lot of variability to the cost, and I also understand it's very different from what folks are used to. As far as what I need to see to support it, I'm not going to say I have any deal breakers. There's seven board members and lots of committee members, and nobody's going to get everything they want, so I understand that. But to Barb's point that she made earlier, I'm wondering if it would help sell the plan from an accountability point of view, if, for the higher salaries, if maybe something other than a two in the Dagnoson score was required.
Steve?
So we'll just go to discussion. Yeah, no, I guess I would echo that too, is the two level, I'm debating in my mind whether that's adequate or enough for purposes of being able to sell this, and one of the things, if we need stuff, is if we could get some idea of what the Danielson, without identifying teachers, where we're at in terms of that. You indicated that we don't have a lot of people, getting twos and threes are fairly commonplace, so we would need to see that, and I would like to talk more as we move forward and get that data as to whether two is the right number there or something, whether we're at a three or something between there, or whether we stagger it, when maybe two's okay for that step, but as you move up, we're expecting you to get closer to a three, something like that. I don't know.
Go ahead.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, but with the twos, my understanding is that it may be in one particular area, and is that average then? And so I don't know if we need, a teacher could have a bad year in two, I mean, and I think that, I guess I don't understand how the two works. Are we talking about an overall, in the Dagnoson of, because I see it as like domain four. That would be the twos in the six areas of that, it would be two in the domain four. Is that what we're talking about?
What you have planned right now is you have an average of two in each of the four domains.
Okay.
So domain one, we have that as an average of two. Domain two, we have it as an average of two. Three, four.
And that doesn't happen very often, doesn't it, the twos?
If you do something more about what you, I have to hurry up.
In the evaluation process?
I would say ones are extremely rare. I would say a sprinkling of twos is not rare. Someone who would get a two in every component of an entire domain, that would probably be someone we'd at least consider for a plan of improvement. So, but a sprinkling of twos is not necessarily a rare thing. I would like to be able to pull the data from last year, from TeachScape, but it's TeachScape, and we can't pull any data from it. So, yeah, so I don't really know how to do that, other than going through the evaluations that were put in personnel files. That's a possibility.
And I guess my point is that if there's a sprinkling of twos, shouldn't raise any red flags, and, you know, and, I guess that's what I'm thinking about.
Well, it depends. I mean, really, if you're someone who's been teaching for 25 years and you still have a two in classroom management, that's kind of odd. But if you're a three-year teacher and a two in classroom management, that's pretty typical. We would coach you through that.
Right, and I'm saying, like, in classroom management, what, there's six components in that classroom management, you have like two.
Oh, no, I meant the component of classroom, the student behavior component.
Okay.
That one, that's the one I was referring to.
So I guess my concern is, I understand what my colleagues are saying about the evaluation of twos, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is that I'm not sure that that is a necessarily something to configure into the plan, to keep people from moving forward because it is a rarity, or maybe just to cover our backs, we do need to do it. So that's up to you guys.
Good, I thought it was up to you, because I'm like, oh, great.
Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Because, you know, I'm hearing one thing, that if the twos are rampant, then we need to do something about it, but there's a sprinkling of twos, I'm not sure that that's for concern. I mean, it is for concern, but something to change the whole format.
Ray?
Well, it's a kind of a question and a comment. I mean, how long has the community been working on this plan? It's been a number of years, correct? Two, three years? Three years. See, I want to believe and trust in the wisdom and the judgment of the committee and the people on the ground who've done this. And if they believe that a two and above works, I trust that they know what they're doing, because they're the ones that are actually doing this work in the classroom. They're the ones who are evaluating, people who are doing the work in the classrooms. I mean, we have this committee before us, it might be, you know, very, very qualitative. And I don't want to get into a little bit of micromanaging here about two versus three. I'm hearing that that is something which would not be a two across the entire board of a person's evaluation, but it might separate them. And I don't want it to go the other direction, where people are feeling somewhat stifled and a little uncomfortable, and like, okay, I get a two here, and, you know, one area of my evaluation, therefore now I'm not going to move. I mean, it could actually have a negative effect on people, where it would stifle their ability to try new things. I mean, if we're talking about this model, Amy Donner keeps talking, we learn from our failures, we learn from our mistakes, and we grow from them. And I think that's something we need to think about. And I think that's something we need to think about when we're in progress. So I guess I'm not really that comfortable with us trying to go back and tell the committee that, okay, we're not, we don't want to and therefore we should change the evaluation of them. I believe it's good, it's sound and it's something we should go forward with.
Steve?
You wanted some feedback on the graduation of a master's degree, you think? So I've been bargaining for all the years and we have said to you historically that masters had some intrinsic value dollar-wise. I believe that, I still believe that it has value, notwithstanding some of the research that's out there that says there's not a link to student achievement. Well, maybe we can't find it on test scores, direct link, but I've always thought the modeling component was important, that we are continuing learners. I think there's some value for our teachers to go back in a structured learning environment. I think you indicated that and I think the substance that is derived out of that has relevance too. So I continue to believe that it has a value that should be recognized in the comp system, whether it's $4,000 or whether you want to move some of that money into fund the steps. I think that we get into that with the costing and your judgment as to how much weight do we want to put on that.
Well, I need to step in. We've looked a lot at the research too and we have found that once you have a master's degree in your subject area, like John and Dave had, that that does show a correlation to increase in student achievement. So, you know, I guess that could be another layer of the discussion too is what masters? And we haven't gotten into that, but.
In that dialogue, I guess the other masters have value, I'm sure you would argue in compensation system, that points off and missed.
Right, or hopefully I mean that are required to have it as part of their job.
I just want to, well, after we're done with the masters thing, I want to go back to the score tape for a second. Yeah. We saw, I'm not going to name the district, but we saw a year, year and a half ago, another district east of here who based a large majority of their schedule on fractional scores on educator effectiveness. So I don't remember the exact details, but if you get a 3.1 to a 3.3, you get this raise. If you get 3.3 to 3.5, you get this raise. And I think to a T, we were universally appalled at how you could take the score that was designed to help teachers grow and really grind it down to that detail and have your raises based on this fractional increase. So I think that, having seen that model, has kind of an emotional aspect to it too, at least it does for me. And that's why I, for one, continue to struggle with this score for E and how do we tie that to raises. Now, I know that you're not suggesting that kind of discernible levels in your conversations, but that's just something that's out there that our committee reacted to.
Regarding the master's degree, just to give you some feedback on, I like the idea that a teacher, there's a certain level that you wouldn't be able to get to without some sort of achievement, whether that be a master's degree, whether it be a national certification or whether it be something more internal where you do some sort of a capstone project after your professional level C to show that you are ready to take on work, whatever it is. But I like that. I can see how, if you're counting years, it's 14 years to professional level D, I believe. And I can imagine that someone in A or B or C who wants to get that masters is going to take five years to get through that particular level because they might not be able to concentrate on the, what do we call it?
Professional.
The sequences while they're working on their masters. So they, let's say during professional level A, they're working on their masters fairly diligently in years one and two, and they manage to get their masters in two years, I mean, three, and then they can complete their sequence. So they might be in level A for five years, but they will also manage to get the salary jump to go with masters in between there so that they're not languishing, say, in a particular level. So that even at the end of professional level C, I can see, I would say a 14, it could be a 16-year or a 17-year period without any wondering what we're, you know, seems like continuous improvement throughout because you add a masters program into there. So I think masters is fairly arbitrary, but it does set an expectation that we expect people to be bringing in education from the outside into our schools. If you get a masters degree, that means you're learning somewhere else and hopefully you're bringing it into our school, so I like that. There is one concern, I just wanted to mention this, and I don't know if somebody's looked at this or not, but if we do pass a referendum in November, if the voters pass a referendum in November regarding this, can we legally make it retroactive? I mean, can voters approve things that are, have to be made some months before they vote on it? It might not be a problem, it's just an issue I thought maybe something that we should look at.
What?
I would like to tell you that if I was a lot younger and a teacher and I wouldn't want to work for this district because of this plan. And I think it offers a lot of opportunity and I think that's great.
Barb?
I just want to go back a little bit for a minute to the scoring issue and I hear what you're saying, John. I can see why having a numerical score tied to the salary schedule would have kind of a bad feeling to it. I am feeling better about the idea that a low score, and what I would call a low score varies depending on how many years you've been teaching. Twos for the first five years is probably what you might expect. But I guess I'd like you all to think about just adding a sentence in here that says something like, failure to move towards a higher level of proficiency in the evaluation process is a reason it could, would be handled through an individual improvement plan. Because that's in a way our failsafe and I think it's a little easier to sell to say there's a, there's a process here for teachers who are not moving up in the proficiency scale, however you want to do it.
Okay, I'll just mention that we are now 18 minutes past our scheduled time to stop, but I don't want to stop anybody from making any final comments or starting any discussions about what they think is important in this plan.
Josh?
I just had a party, I'm dealing with the whole big picture of referendum and I'm sure that Joe's got his head wrapped around this already, but I remember when we were deciding whether to go with the capital referendum and do we do the two together? And at the time, I was really uncomfortable with splitting them up. In retrospect, I am so much happier with this plan now than the plan that we had before you then. And it's a plan that I think that we can really support and one that I think is more directly tied to student achievement through the professional development of teachers. What, the message that I think that the community needs to see is that we have this two-step process to make, to keep this district relevant for its students. One is to raise the bar on our material capital, on our buildings, and one is to raise the bar on our human capital and that they really go hand in hand and one without the other is not going to be a benefit to the students of this district. And so I think we need to keep that message out in front, that this isn't another afterthought of what we need to do, but it's a two-step process that we have embarked on to keep this district relevant. And I think you can show that if we can't keep teachers here, we're not going to be relevant regardless of the buildings that we have.
You know?
So to use Jeff's words, because I liked it, if any of you have deal breakers, if you would please express them now if you haven't already, because what we want to do, and I thank Leslie for collecting all of your feedback, is to go back and revise the plan based on what our stakeholders have told us. So I would just say, if you have a deal breaker and you haven't voiced it, please do so tonight so we can work on changing some, you know, revising the plan.
And I assume, Charles is not here tonight, but he's a member of the committee, so I assume that you've got some feedback from him as far as what he thinks about this plan.
Yes.
I think my take on it is the board members are very positive about this plan. And I would suggest that it may be in a place where we could start displaying it to other stakeholders and asking for their feedback, the community, teachers, like that. So that we can get a head start on this publicity and get people thinking about this and ready to vote for or against when it's up.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about, Dan, because in terms of the plan itself, I think there's a general comfort level with it, with the exception of some questions we've raised tonight and some considerations that the committee has to think about, including the scoring system, but there are whole other little details too that the structures find. If you're talking about the cost component, that's a separate deal that we've really got to look at. And I don't want to run out numbers to the public ahead of being able to look at what that means in terms of referendum at a first look, okay? Because we'll need to, we'll need to make some assessment as to our comfort level on that. I'm not saying that what we've got is uncomfortable, but I'm not, what I'm saying is before we take it out to other stakeholders, I think it would be a mistake to get us out too far, like I think we did last time, and get cut off by the public right away on something that they didn't feel sustainable. Let's take a first look at those numbers. Now that we've got a plan that in a broad scope, I think everybody likes a lot, get some numbers to it, figure out the answers to the other questions in there, let's take a look at the numbers and then get it to folks so that they're comfortable.
I would even, I would even say, whatever intentions you have, go through Joe because last time around, a number got thrown out here completely, just as an example, and then, and then that number was the number. And then that became the focus. And so.
Killed it before we had a chance to.
Right. So I think the committee has kind of talked about this with Joe and, you know, what do you roll out and when do you roll it out so that the people can make the most sense of it and be most receptive to the ideas and not worry so much about cost first. And so I would just recommend, please go through him before you decide what you want to do or at least ask for his opinion.
So now, just to get an idea, and Dr. Bustler, you would also give us an idea, what, when do you think we might be, a good idea to start talking about these numbers? February meeting or should we have another special meeting, do you think?
I would start by looking backwards. In November 2016 is the referendum date. I'm not sure if the date's the fifth or the sixth, but whatever that general election date is, we know the board needs to make a decision on or about August 20th. We also know historically, the community doesn't spend a lot of time giving this feedback over the summer. Everything seems to be in summer break mode over the summer. What would be nice is if before we recess for the summer, if we were able to put a, I'll say near final plan out in a newsletter that Joe's worked with us on the, in the past with, that we did on the capital referendum. If we were able to do that, parents and community members would have a sense and there's a lot of interaction over the summer with parents and that would give them sort of a crystallized picture of the plan. Of course, the board still reserves the right to make a few changes in that August timeline. Backing up from the, what I'll call the end of May newsletter, we probably have the months of March and April to really pin down the cost and to pin down all the key elements of the plan in a survey with staff as well as with a community survey. I'm not on the committee, but if I was on the committee, I would want a little time, perhaps a month, to reflect on what our Oregon teachers are telling us and what the community is telling us so we can respond to those questions and have that part of the, the community newsletter that we send out at the end of, at the end of May. So I think we want to, we're going to need to pin down the budget costs or the potential costs of this by the end of February, if I were to pick a, if I were to pick a date. I think we want the committee to bring those costs back so they can explain their assumption and their rationale and then the board's going to need to react to that and, you know, thumbs up, thumbs sideways, not going to say thumbs down, so that we can find a price that we feel the community will support. And then Joe, through the survey that we did last time, there's some questions that we can ask and Jeff, you might remember on the school perception survey, we didn't ask specifically what should the referendum dollar amount be, but we boxed in a few questions to give us a sense of what type of approval rate we could get at different, at different dollar amounts. So if you follow my sequencing back, I think we need to pin down the budget numbers by the end of February. We need to get into survey mode with our staff as well as with parents. I think, again, I'm not sure what the committee wants to do, if you're going to do it simultaneous, if you were to do that by the end of March, that would give all of April for a little revision, come back to the board one more time and then send the newsletter out in May. So I'm not trying to do your work, I'm just trying to draw a picture of how do we get to November.
So Joe, does all that sound like it would make sense to you?
Just off my own line.
Okay. So, Dr. Bustler, what do we have, if you can remember, scheduled for a second meeting in February? Do we have one?
Yes, we do have a, we do have a second meeting in February and right now, that's a site visit meeting. So we're going to be going to the middle school that night, but we could also do some work. Shannon and I have talked about a site visit for about an hour. So if we started at that five-ish range, we could go to six, have a little break for dinner and maybe 6:30 to 8:30, the board could work through those budgets. I know I'm springing that on you, but I'm, that's what Shannon and I have been working on from a site visit standpoint. I'm springing it up. I'm springing it on the committee too, but no one has passed out in the chairs that they're sitting in, so.
Does that sound like a, between now and, what would that be? February 20?
I don't need the exact date.
Luckily, we have an extra day in February. We can just do whatever we want with, right?
It is the 22nd of February.
The 22nd, committee? Could we start pinning down some numbers or getting number ranges?
I think we can, but I think right now, our, our big focus is getting the right plan in place, just like with the capital referendum, that, you know, we have the right plan in place based on all the community's needs, and that's really been our focus. And so we have to talk as a committee what our schedules look like. But obviously, we've, you know, affordability is one of our pillars, so we've always taken that in mind as we've crafted the plan. So I just need to talk to the committee and Joe, and look at our timeline and schedules.
So at least tentatively, let's aim for that, to have a meeting for at least an hour, maybe two hours on the 22nd after the site visit at the middle school. Hopefully, that'll, that'll work. Okay, any final thoughts? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, the second to adjourn. All of you, if they would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you very much, good meeting. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
It's reasonable that at the first board meeting in February, we could have a date for the.